All right, I do have a time of 9:00 AM. I will call the meeting to order and we will begin with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And, good morning. Can we get the verification of the legal notices?
And legal notice has been determined, Matt, served on this matter.
Thank you. And, we have the, looking for approval of the consent agenda for the two items.
Mr. Chair, unless there are changes or edits proposed by any of my colleagues on the minutes, Commissioner Field?
This is really stupid, but I believe Christina made the motion on the first item at the last meeting, because I had a sore throat, not me, that's all.
That was an error on the minutes?
It's kind of not important.
It can be noted.
It reflects reality.
Absolutely. So we can, we can make that change to the minutes?
Yeah, so I would move that we adopt the consent agenda, items 4A and 4B, 4B amended as per Commissioner Field's comments.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. And, any person may speak for three minutes about any subject of concern, provided that it is within the jurisdiction of the planning commission and is not already on today's agenda. Agendas of public meeting and supporting documents are available for public inspection in the Lake County Courthouse, Community Development Department, 3rd floor, 255 North Forbes Street, Lakeport, California. A request for disability-related modifications or accommodations necessary to participate in the planning commission meetings should be made in writing to the planning commission secretary at least 48 hours prior to the meeting. So if there's any citizen's input, if anybody would like to speak, we do grant three minutes for that. First item is timed for 9:05, which is in three minutes. And if there's anybody in the Zoom room that would like to join us for public, for citizen's input? Okay, seeing that there's none, our first item is timed for 9:05, which is in two minutes, so just hang, hang tight for a minute. It is 9:05 for our first item, consideration of proposed major use permit, UP 21-16, mitigated negative declaration IS 21-17 for outdoor commercial cannabis cultivation. Applicant Royan Betts or Pacific Can Inc., project location 9141 State Highway 175, Kelseyville, APN 011-060-01. And we have a report, staff report?
Good morning.
Standing Commissioners, I'm Melissa Frouster, presenting for Pacific Can Inc. Major use permit 21-16 for Pacific Can at 9141, 9261, and 9300 Highway 175 in Kelseyville. The applicant is requesting 1A type 3 medium outdoor cultivation license, 3A type 2B mixed light cultivation licenses, 1 type 13 self-distribution, the process size is 145.2 acres. The base zoning is rural lands with special lot size density scenic waterway combining district. The general plan designation is rural lands. Project parcel is in the Cobb Mountain Planning Area. Parcels within the vicinity are zone rural lands, rural residential, and timberland preserve zone. Highway 175 and Wildcat Road goes through the project parcel on east-west orientation. The site is approximately 3.1 miles south of the Clear Lake Riviera community growth boundary. The site contains 1 Class 1 water course, Coal Creek, and a small pond that discharges to Coal Creek via Class 3 water course. The project's site meets the required setbacks found in Article 27.11. The project proposes 58,320 square feet of outdoor cultivation area, 42,000 square feet canopy area, and 36,864 square feet of mixed light cultivation area, and 30,000 square feet of canopy area, totaling 95,184 square feet of cultivation area and 72,000 square feet of canopy area. Property will be accessed from Wildcat Road. The site contains 2 existing permitted residence, 1 existing permitted 2,000 square feet security center and pesticide and agricultural chemical storage barn, 1 existing permitted groundwater well yielding 7.06 gallons per minute. Total annual water use is approximately 1,988,000 gallons per year and 8,690 gallons per day. The applicant has submitted a drought management plan, attachment 5. The project proposes 5,000 square feet processing facility building for onsite use only, 1 proposed groundwater well, and 4 proposed metal water storage tanks.
Is that well proposed or is it already existing onsite?
There is 1 existing well and then 1 is proposed.
1 is in addition?
Yeah.
Thanks.
There is proposed oak tree removal and replacement for this site to comply with the California Oak Woodland Conservation Act. A 6-acre no-development zone has been established. 114 oak seedlings will be planted, protected, and irrigated for seven years. The applicant has submitted an oak mitigation plan. The project was reviewed for compliance with the Lake County General Plan, Cobb Mountain Area Plan, Lake County Zoning Ordinance and State Regulations. Rural lands general plan designation was reviewed and there is no conflicting policies in the general plan. We identified several Cobb Mountain policies that could apply to the project pertaining to soil erosion, protection of water resources, and protection of scenic shoots. Article 7 will land, Article 27 uses generally permitted, Article 30 special lot size density, Article 34 scenic combining district, and Article 37 waterway combining were all analyzed as part of the zoning ordinance analysis. The project is compliant with the B District, SC District, WW District, no structures within the SC zone, and exceeds the required setbacks from water courses. The SEQA initial study found that the project could cause potential impacts but are reduced to less than significant with mitigation measures to the following resources: aesthetics, agriculture and forestry resources, air quality, biological resources, cultural resources, geology and soils, hazards and hazardous materials, hydrology and water quality, noise and wildfire. The circulation from the initial study was from September 26th to October 25th, 2022. All identified impacts to resources can be mitigated and reduced to less than significant. Mitigations are outlined in attachment 2, proposed conditions of approval, and attachment 4 initial study. Staff recommends to adopt negative declaration initial study 21-17 and approve use permit 21-16 with the findings and conditions of approval. Thank you, planning staff is available for questions.
Thank you. Is there any questions from the commission before we bring it back to the, for public comment?
I have a question about the oak trees. When you, when you, somewhere in here I saw that the term plus 6, I believe it's diameter at breast height, does that mean 6 inches or more, or 6 inches or less? What does plus 6 mean?
I believe it means 6 inches or greater, so a minimum of 6.
Okay, because that's, when I visited the site, I think there were 2 trees that were bigger than 6 inches, so I'm a little confused on that. I'm also a little confused on the numbers. If they're going to remove 22 trees and plant 114 oak seedlings, how did you get those numbers?
Could I add to that? The oak mitigation study refers to 40 trees and the staff report only refers to 22.
Yeah, I noticed that as well.
So the oak mitigation study referred to 40 trees and I believe the site has been designed in a way to only remove 22, but the applicant's agent is here and he may be able to shed some light on the difference in the number of trees. I believe they redesigned it to reduce the number of trees being planted.
Well, it would affect the number of seedlings planted.
It should affect the number of seedlings too, because still at 3 to 1, that's going to change the math, yeah.
Yeah, 114, it's like 5.18 trees per, I mean, there's something weird there.
The, the numbers came out of the oak mitigation study, but if the applicant could clarify that, I think that'd be great.
Thanks.
Any further questions? Okay, is anybody here that would like to answer those questions from the commission?
Good morning, my name is Trey Sherrill, I'm consultant for Pacific Can Inc. To answer the question, the discrepancies in the numbers for the oak trees, when Jacobson and Associates surveyed the sites for the trees to be removed or to be impacted by the proposed operation, they included every single oak tree, including saplings that were 2 and 1/2 feet tall without a, they didn't even quantify the DBH of those saplings. They also included some, some oaks, like a bush interior live oak that had a .1 inch DBH, which is like my index finger, as well as several, yeah, like 1, 1.35 foot tall saplings. That's the difference is the 6 inches or more DBH, those are trees that are protected by the Oak Conservation Act, whereas less than 6 inches, they're not protected. Therefore, when evaluating impact for SEQA and mitigation measures, we're using the 22 oaks that are protected versus the report that was the oak habitat plan or oak habitat assessment, that, that they assessed every single oak, including small saplings. And I'm able to answer any other questions?
I have an additional oak question.
Yes.
In terms of oaks providing habitat for birds, food sources, that kind of thing, how long will it take in terms of those seedlings to grow to a point where they can provide similar habitat protections and all the rest?
I'm, I'm not a biologist, so I-
But the, the report is silent on that, the oak mitigation study.
Yes, I, yes, sir. I, it would, it would definitely take some years, there's a reason why these, the trees that they're planting have to be maintained for seven years at that point. They are established well enough where they no longer need support, or they should no longer need support to continue to, to grow and thrive on the property. This is a large property with lots of other oak woodland habitat, mixed oak woodland habitat, I should say, and so we're, we're affecting a small portion of the overall property that will not be affected in, in the addition of adding oak trees between the operation and Highway 175 and the 6-inch, I'm sorry, 6-acre no-development zone. That is an area that, that area is just upstream of the pond, up slope, I should say, of the pond, and, and it has some of the most dense and diverse oak habitat of the property.
Thanks.
Yeah, I still don't have an answer as to how many seedlings per tree.
Yeah, it's 5.8. I'm, I was-
So I read somewhere that oak seedlings have a mortality rate of 18% per year or something, and that's how they came up with 7 trees per, my memory might be faulty, but that's what I have in my mind and-
Well, that mortality, I believe, would be in, in a natural setting.
Okay.
The, the intent is to lose much less than that per year, and that's the, the reason for having to care for these trees, including irrigation and protecting them from browsing animals such as deer and for a certain amount of time.
Okay, thank you, yeah, that makes sense. One more thing on oak trees, I saw on the property management plan listing lots of different kinds of oak trees. They call it a blue oak woodland, but corcus de glassei are not listed, so I was a little confused by that, but, but in the, in another section I did see, that, when I visited the site, I saw them, so I know they're there.
They, so I think the blue oak woodland is the more open areas of the property, whereas a mixed oak woodland with much more conifer species is the majority of the habitat on the property.
Yeah, I think they like the flatter, hotter.
Yeah. I did want to, the, in the report, the well, the existing wells indicated to be, I believe, 7.6 gallons per minute, but it's actually over 60 gallons per minute, the existing well, although there is, there are restrictions, the, the current pump can not only pump, I believe, 12 gallons per minute, and then there's a, and the water meter that, that meters water from the well at per, per one of the requirements of Article 27, it restricts that flow to 40 gallons per minute, but still much more than the 7.9. And then also access would be granted from both Wildcat Road and Highway 75. We're, we're going to adhere to one direction of travel for the purposes of compliance with 4290. Thank you.
Just one quick question, have you guys had any neighbors or neighboring concerns from anybody around there, just asking questions or being in support of the project or anything like that?
I'm not aware of that, but Ms. Betts is here and, and she lives on the property, so she would know better than I to answer that question.
Thank you. Yes, please. First and last name?
Yeah, I'm Robin Betts, I'm the property owner. And we, our neighbors were notified and we heard from 2 neighbors and they were supportive. Bill, he's, I forget his last name, he's across the street, and then our, our next-door neighbor to our property, which is hard to see their home, and he also just wanted to know where we were growing. We let him know the areas of the property and he said he was fine with that, so we haven't had any complaints. Yeah, thank you.
I just wanted to say, this was a little confusing to me because the different acreages in different parts of this, I know it's really hard, especially over a 2-year period of time, to make everything match up, but, so I just did the math on the 72,000. I thought it was 30-something square feet of canopy and it looks like you have enough water, but I think it, we need to make it clear that this is not, this is not enough water for 72,000 square feet. I mean, depending on your spacing, I think you're going to need about 19,700 gallons per day, but you have that. I just think that we need to be aware of this, is when we're looking at these hydrology studies, I didn't see any references to other wells. We had this hydrologist come in and teach us about this, and, and I think we need to put that information to work when we're evaluating these. It's just a comment.
Any other questions from the commission? I think we are still in public comment. If we want to check the Zoom room, just in case if there's anybody there with a hand up. No hands?
Hello, Trey Sherrill, consultant for Pacific Can Inc. I just wanted to try to address Commissioner Field's comment. The, the hydrology study differentiated between water use for the outdoor cultivation area and the mixed light cultivation area. The reason for the differentiation is because the, so the mixed light cultivation area would use water year-round and therefore would have a roughly similar amount of water use year-round. It, you know, evaporation would increase during the summer months and so that would, water usage would increase during the summer months, whereas the outdoor cultivation area would only occur between June and October. And then, and then in the differentiation, the hydrology study indicated, you know, the 58,320 square feet of outdoor cultivation area and the 36,864 square feet of mixed light cultivation area. And I, and maybe that was, the differentiation, perhaps that was the reason for, for it not being clear. We estimate that the outdoor cultivation area would use 2.6 acre feet, while the mixed light cultivation area would use 2.54 acre feet, and I believe I, and that's translated into gallons as well, in the summary of the report.
I really like, by the way, how you do that. You give a, a chart that shows both, because I'm a farmer, I think gallons per minute, other people think acre feet.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's, it's like translation, you know, we're all talking about, it's, it's all volumetric measurements, but, you know, so for example, those, those numbers, those acre feet combined would be 1,700,000 gallons, and so that, that becomes a very large number that becomes cumbersome to, in reports, and so it's, it's sometimes easier to use acre feet, to be more concise. And I'm happy to answer any other questions at this time.
I have one question, Mr. Sherrill, do you have any involvement from either Middletown, Rancharia, or Big Valley? Have they commented or been involved in any discussions? I didn't see any reference to any of the tribes in-
If I can just interrupt here, on the property management plan, that was a question I noted, why was the cultural resources section of the property management plan redacted?
Because that is what is published to SEQUA net and is publicly available, and this is sensitive information that they don't want the public having. To, to that extent, we recently had to remove the location of the, there is a, a cultural resource area on this property, it's been identified, and a 50-foot buffer has been established, or will be established, I should say, before any project development were, were to occur, but we had to remove that from the site plans for this, for this hearing, because the, the hearing would be publicly noticed.
And, so I did have a question for staff too, and I'm not sure if, so I'm looking at the initial study, the section 5, and in the response from staff, there's a reference in the last sentence that says the, the SLF search returned positive results. I've never seen SLF before, so I'm not sure what that's referring to or if it's supposed to be sacred sites land file? So I'm not sure, I haven't seen that.
I believe it's referring to sacred lands file, the California Native American Heritage Commission's sacred lands file.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to, to understand. And so what this is, to me, without having the opportunity to look at the report, the cultural resource report, I don't know if this is referring to, you know, a burial site or specific scientific information in terms of actual artifacts, and so that, that's a little alarming for myself, not knowing that's specific, because to me that would require, depending on if it, you know, unfortunately, a Native American burial is considered a resource for science, and so without knowing, it just raises concern in terms of what that is, and that's why I'm asking if the tribes had been involved to further have any discussion, if not, then that's, you know, that's what it is, but that was the question I had for the tribes.
I'm, I'm sorry.
I think it's a question for staff, did, were-
Well, Mr. Sherrill clarified, it did this as sacred sites lands file. I've just never seen SLF before, so I wasn't clear on that, but if the tribes have been involved, if, you know, that, that's all I was asking.
Particularly the Middletown Rancharia, I, I reach out to them often, Mr. Michael Rivera's my contact there, and, and I, and I can't say 100% certain, because I've spoken to him about a number of sites, and so I may be confusing him, but I believe when the, this particular site that's located on this property was, was recorded, I believe I mentioned this to Mr. Rivera, and he indicated that this was outside of their sphere of influence, but I, don't quote me on that, I'm sorry, I have a dozen sites that I work with, with him, and I may be confusing those.
I don't know if this is helpful or not, but the staff report refers to all tribes located in Lake County were notified of the proposal, May 28, 2021. No tribal comments were received as a result of AB 52.
Thank you, that was my next question.
It wa, it was referred to, referred to all the tribes, the application was.
Any further questions from the commission?
Oh, I'm just very concerned about the tree removal. When I visited the property, I saw 2 trees, which is a negotiable number, but 22 is a lot more than 2, so it concerns me. Finally, comment?
Can we just take one quick look at the Zoom room, so we can close public comment and bring it back to the commission for- Okay, I'll be bringing back to the commission for motion.
I have a request for staff, Mr. Chair. While I do support this project, I noticed a reference to Wildcat Road, and without having a photographic memory, it's a road we've heard a lot about lately in terms of applications and grows, and while I, as I say, I don't oppose this particular application, but we're starting to get into that cumulative effects territory, and I just don't know, it would be possible for Andrew Amalung to, in the staff reports, include already approved grows in the same vicinity and/or in the pipeline, so that we could get a sense of the cumulative effect on a particular area?
I think Andrew is actually working on some GIS maps for that, so we can schedule a presentation for the planning commission, so you can have an overall bird's eye view of that.
Well, I think it's important for applicants and the public to understand too, that while we've approved several, perhaps in one location, suddenly we say no, which we haven't done, but as a result of cumulative effects.
We could add that as a, a standing slide in our, our PowerPoint.
I wouldn't find that helpful, I can't speak for my fellow commissioners, but-
Yeah.
Sure, yeah, please talk to them about it.
Commissioners, if I may, you are correct, Commissioner Hess, the cumulative effects is part of the SEQA analysis, it should have been performed as part of the analysis for this project, so if you have specific questions as to cumulative effect for this project, you can certainly ask them. If the information isn't present in the, in the material provided to your commission, or if you, if it's confusing, you can ask for clarification, you can ask for further information as well, so if it's not present, or it's not clear, you can certainly ask staff for clarification, because it should have been part of the analysis already.
Sure. For my part, I was just asking going forward.
I will add that it was, it was analyzed in the initial study, and then I did want to point out a couple of things, if I may, and then, and then make a request out of condition. First of all, I wanted to call attention to the- First of all, I wanted to call attention to the drought management plan, just to point out this project does have measures to reduce their water usage during the, during the drought emergency. I wanted to call attention to that, make sure it's understood. And then I wanted to add a condition, because it's not shown, you can see on this map, on the plan that we have for you, there is the proposed no grow zone. I need to add a condition of approval that states that the final plan shall reflect the six-acre no development zone as shown in the PowerPoint presentation.
The purpose, then, I'm assuming, Byron, and you can confirm this, is by establishing a condition that that is the no grow zone as shown in the site plan and will include the specific date of the site plan. It is to try to achieve the same effect as a conservation easement would, in that that area will be checked on our annual monitoring to make sure that there continues to be no development in that, in that particular zone.
Oh, interesting, and this would be just upstream of the water source, right?
That was the intent, yes.
That sounds great to me.
It just wasn't reflected very well on the plans that were attached.
Do we have a motion?
Yeah, I'm ready to support this project. It's a beautiful location, and I'm impressed with the work that's been done here. I move that the planning commission, I move that the planning commission find that the potential impacts associated with this project can be mitigated to less than significant through the implemented, implementation of the mitigated negative declaration IS 2117 submitted by Pacific Can Inc. for the property located at 9141 9261 and 9300 Highway 175, Kelseyville, and that the planning commission adopt initial study IS 2117 with the findings listed in the staff report dated February 9, 2023.
And as amended, here today.
I think that would be with the use permit. Am I wrong? The condition of approval?
As amended, because we are amending the conditions right now.
But this, the motion currently is for sequo?
Yeah, it's for the.
Yes, we're not amending, we're not amending the sequo, right? So, yeah, it would be the second motion, you're correct, Commissioner.
Thank you. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes.
I further move that the planning commission approve the major use permit UP 2116 applied for by Pacific Can Inc. on property located at 9141 9261 and 9300 Highway 175, Kelseyville, based on the findings and subject to the conditions as amended today, included in the staff report dated February 9, 2023.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Note that the applicant or any interested person is reminded that this zoning ordinance provides a seven-day calendar day appeal period. There's, if there is a disagreement with the planning commission, an appeal to the board of supervisors may be filed. The appropriate forms and applicable fees must be submitted prior to 5:00 PM on or before the seventh day following the planning commission's decision on this matter. Thank you. And moving on to our second item, the approval of revised Lake County Planning Commission bylaws.
Thank you. The last, as has already been presented to the planning commission, the last time we updated the bylaws for the planning commission was in 2000. So it's about time. A number of changes were made to the draft bylaws that were, to address the rules of order. We're going to go with Rosenberg, which is better suited for small groups such as ours, Quorum, and Taking Action. We added a little clarification on that, because the old ones were kind of confusing. And then also the option for reconsideration. We previously had a part in there about alternates, but when the planning commission considered the amendments on November 17, that part was removed by consensus. And so now you have the updated draft version. If I could just add one more thing. These bylaws are meant to be a living document, and so we will not wait another 23 years before looking at them again. The point of the document is to protect the, the planning commission, to make sure that the public understands how we're operating, and to keep it updated so that it reflects as times change and procedures change. So I'm hoping that you'll feel free to discuss any item that you think may not reflect what we're doing now, and we'll take it from there. And I leave it to you. Thank you.
Thank you. And seeing as we don't, oh, we have to approve the bylaws, right?
The end action should the commission desire to do so would be action to approve the bylaws.
So looking for a motion.
If I may comment on part of the, the bylaws. I feel like the, the section on site visits doesn't really reflect reality, you know, 23 years down the road, meaning that the idea of us all going on a field trip sounds very quaint, and, and I think sort of unwieldy in terms of the Brown Act and ex parte, ex parte communications. And since I've been on the commission, it was hard to plan those things in advance and notify the public as well, because I could get a call out of the blue from an applicant in District One, from which I am appointed, asking me to come, and presumably is coordinating with other commissioners to make similar site visits, like for Six Sigma. And that seems to be more the reality now, in that commissioners disclose that they have made a site visit when that agenda item is up at the next meeting. And I don't know, I just can't see all of us getting on a little tour bus and driving around and not being able to talk to each other about what we're seeing, and asking and answering questions.
Commissioners, if I may provide some clarity on this particular section. So section one, the big, of site visits, that sentence there says that the commission may, when needed, call a special meeting for, and so the way this seemed to read in the original bylaws, or the current bylaws, was that it allowed for a process for when the commission in its entirety would visit a site. So should there be any circumstance in which more than two of you would go to a site at any one time? And so it gave a designated time, or day of the month, and it gave the process by which that could happen. It doesn't prevent individual commissioners from visiting sites on their own. In fact, there is a section later, I think, or in which your, your commission requires itself, its members to.
Disclose.
Disclose visits that they do take on their own, and what they've learned from those. So this is not a limiting section, it's not intended to be a limiting section. What it does is provide direction to the commission, from the commission, to its members on how to visit a site when more than two members would be visiting.
Should we put something in section two about more than two commissioners, then?
We could clarify that this particular, that this, that you, if this is true, that if your commission plans that this, that site visits involving more than two commissioners that would trigger the Brown Act would follow this procedure, if that would be more helpful.
I think that makes it clearer, I do.
Okay.
I mean, I think that's fine, for when we do take an all, all-commission tour, that language is helpful. But it doesn't address a solo visit, or even a visit.
Would a sentence just saying a special meeting would be required if two, if more than two planning commissioners visited the site?
Well, I was thinking, because for that first sentence, the commission may, when needed, call a special meeting in which the commission will engage in a site visit is permissive. So it's not a requirement.
But it's not shell.
Right, exactly. So the commission may, when it, when it's called for, follow the following procedure in, in section two. And to make it more clear, we could say the commission may, when needed, call a special meeting in which two or more of the, of commission members will engage in the site visit, if that clarifies it.
It would constitute, yeah, that's a great idea. So just, just to make sure I understand this, this language is, without that language, do I need to notify the commission when I make, at the preceding meeting, to, when I visit a site? Maria is shaking her head.
Yes, there would be, there is a disclosure provision within the bylaws presented here, the draft bylaws here, in which commissioners would disclose their, their visits and communications with the public and along those lines.
But it would be in public session after the site visit. You don't have to notify everybody before you're going on the site visit.
Yes, the commission, the draft was not.
Just when the agenda item comes up.
Correct.
That the commission should disclose.
Correct. If you do know in advance, nothing prevents you from, from noticing the public at a prior meeting, hey, in the next agenda, there will be a project that's coming along, and I will be visiting before the meeting.
I think that would be a good idea, because I, I'm a little unclear about if there are two people on a site visit, are they allowed to discuss things at that site visit?
So two or less members.
Fewer.
Present, fewer, excuse me. Two or fewer, no, 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 I understand. I should have been more careful. Two or fewer members on a site, or in any location, meeting together, should always be cautious of the Brown Act rules. So it is especially acute at site visits when you are there for the purpose of, at a location for the purpose of the planning commission, for the business of the planning commission. You can be there, it doesn't trigger a meeting with two or fewer. What it does do, however, is provide, create a scenario in which there is a risk of perceived or actual conflict, or the potential of creating an opinion prior to deliberation, which should occur here together.
Right.
As a body. So when you do meet, or you're running to be cautious, don't discuss the item or business in a, in a way that is a deliberation, that creates, that has the potential, or does in fact create an opinion for you prior to hearing all of the evidence at the meeting. And be cautious of running into others if there's two members together. It'd be, you know, say, for example, since if you're, since you're not create, since you're not attending or visiting sites together, it's a very real possibility that you may have the same free time as other commissioners, and you might end up accidentally with three people present, which would create a meeting. Or you might run in the risk of, you know, idle commentary as you, you know, one person leaves and another person arrives, another member arrives, and you could end up creating conversation that could very easily turn into talking shop, which could very easily turn into a deliberation. So there's always that risk. You're not required to go alone. Two or fewer is acceptable, but you do need to be careful of your conversation. And that's not just between members, but also conversation with public. So if you are on a site and there is the applicant present, or there are staff for the applicant present, or there are other members of the public present, having conversations with them could also trigger conflict issues where you've, you've created an opinion, you've expressed an opinion, you know, having a conversation, well, I think that's great, this is a great project. Well, you don't know yet, you don't have all the information, so it's important not to form that opinion prior to.
I'm thinking about the greater good of having another brain to ask questions that I hadn't thought of.
As long as you're cautious about it. I mean, there's always the risk. I can't weigh that risk for you as commissioners, especially if it's situation-specific. That would be something for you to determine at that time. But I would, I would advise caution. So the language, then, for section one, if there are no further questions along those lines, that I would recommend would be the commission may, when needed, call a special meeting in which two or more regular members of the commission will engage in a site visit.
Okay, no further comments or questions on the item?
Pardon me, I do have another question. On the motion to reconsider, section two says, "A motion to reconsider may be made only by a member who voted in the majority on the original motion." It seems to me, in a real-world setting, it might be a member who voted in the minority and still has an issue and would like to reconsider that.
Change their vote?
It does, it does, well, not change, it does, on first glance, look like it might be a little.
Top heavy.
Well, backwards in some respects, but essentially what you have is a situation in which the commission, a majority of the commission, so three of you or more of you, have voted a particular way. And for reconsideration, the purpose of this, of this section here was to prevent revisiting and revisiting if there are those who did not vote in the majority way, from trying to change that outcome by trying for reconsideration, right? So say, for example, you had a vote to approve a permit, and it was a majority vote yes to approve, and then this would effectively prevent the revisiting and revisiting from those who were in the minority vote, who didn't agree with the outcome, from, from trying to change it by reconsideration and reconsideration votes.
I understand what you're saying, but why would a member of the majority motion be suddenly inclined to reconsider if it reflects the way that commissioner wants the outcome to look?
Any number of reasons could occur, you know, further information during the meeting, that they realized they misunderstood something.
Wouldn't that information have come out before the, the vote?
Potentially. I don't, I.
I just don't want to limit the rights of the minority commissioner to reconsider, so to speak. Am I being picky? Am I?
No, I hear what you're saying, but what I'm thinking is, how else could we make that happen? And say, I voted in the minority and changed my mind, then I could go to.
No, I would want the majority to change its mind, and therefore reconsider.
Well, that majority person is the one who would be able to do that.
If there is a vote, yes.
But why would the majority person suddenly vote to change his or her vote?
Well, there wouldn't need to be, so a person in the minority, if you voted yes, the majority voted yes, and there was someone in the minority who voted no, changes their mind, that wouldn't change the outcome.
No, it would be, maybe I'm misunderstanding, but I would, if, if there was a motion I strongly disagree with, and it passes, and I'm in the minority, I have no recourse to persuade my fellow commissioners to reconsider.
Right, but the.
But you didn't have a reason to, because it passed.
So either you, either you.
Is my reason because I'm in the minority become less valid?
No, you voted already. So.
You made a point.
The point here is that it's not, it's not, the purpose of reconsideration is not to allow for a circumstance in which everybody can have a second or more crack at voting again and again on an item.
Right.
If you are in the minor, if you're in the majority and you voted yes, and there's somebody in the, in the minority who voted no, if they change their, if they change their mind and say, I should have voted, and suddenly think I should have voted yes, it will not change the outcome, because the majority voted yes. If they are still in of the mind that they voted, that they, that they are going to vote no, and they just want to try again, the majority has already voted. So the point here is to prevent people trying again and trying again and trying again for a vote that has already occurred. The purpose of a reconsideration, and the reason we put this in here, was because of circumstances in the past, recently, where there have been instances that have come up where sort of procedural stuff might have, might have been an issue, and there was just no mechanism for the commission to reconsider because of that, or circumstances that led the commission, or the majority that did vote, think, oh, we should really consider that again. And that's why this included here. It's not an effort to allow for a revote and a revote and a revote. The goal is to just provide a mechanism by which the commission can fairly consider items. And if there is, is a hopefully rare circumstance in which, in which there is some error or some, you know, some kind of issue that pops up, your, your commission has the option of reconsideration, but not to revote and revote. commission has the option of reconsideration, but not to revote and revote.
No, thank you. I'll stand down.
I see your point, but in my mind, I'm running it through what would hap, what's likely to happen in reality. And if I voted against something because of my math, and then I discovered that I did the math wrong, and I wanted to go on the record as supporting a project, then I would simply go to somebody who had voted in favor of it and request that they submit it for another vote and then record my positive.
Okay.
Yeah?
In that instance, though, aside from wanting to put that on the, your understanding of the error that you've created in that circumstance, or that you had in that circumstance on the record, your vote in that circumstance would not have changed the outcome. Yeah.
Thanks.
Any more questions? So we're looking for action to approve the bylaws.
Mr. Chair, I, I move to approve the revised Lake County Planning Commission bylaws.
As amended?
As amended here today.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
None.
Motion passes. And we move on to department update.
Thank you. All right. Today I would like to just give you an update on where we are regarding the general plan and related documents update. We have a draft RFP that we've just finished peer review upstairs and sent it down to admin for their review. Hopefully that'll get out soon. I really don't know what the timeline is because I'm still new getting back here, but I am going to follow up enthusiastically and consistently until we can get that passed. But I wanted to go over just a visual that our senior planner, Laura Hall, created when she was working on this RFP. Thank you, Jim. Jim's going to get that up and running. As you know, we have a number of advanced planning documents to work on, and it's really exciting when it's not really overwhelming. So I, we just sketched out a timeline that Laura did a great job of identifying visually for, for easy consumption, that kind of shows the advanced planning projects that we'll be working on for the next five years. And as soon as he gets that table up, you'll see, the top ones are going to be in red. Those are our top priorities, and there are two elements of the general plan that are the top priorities. One is the housing element, which is due, an update is due to the state by this August. So we're already sort of doing some preparatory work for that in case we can't get a contractor to come alongside and help us, and we need to do it in-house. We're already starting to position ourselves for that one. Then the second one is a safety element, which we are treating as a top priority because in the 2008 general plan, one of the implementation tasks was to update the safety element as soon as possible. So it would be good if we get it done before that 20-year mark reaches us. Prior to the safety element, we're required to do a climate vulnerability analysis, and I'm really excited about this document because it not only informs our safety element, but it'll jump over to the Office of Emergency Services and inform their local hazard mitigation plan. It will also help our climate resiliency officer to get a good kind of ground information about what, where we are and where we need to go. So this is, this, I, I'm, I can't wait till this comes out, but, so if you'll see, it's the top few lines in red. It's really, really small, but that is the climber, climate vulnerability analysis, our safety element, our housing element, along with, of course, the SEQA document, which will have to accompany those. Then you go over to the blue, which is a high priority, not the highest priority, and we're going to start moving into our area plans.
Yeah.
I think I told you how I'm hoping we can do it, which will actually start before 2024. We're already talking at the staff level about creating a checklist to capture all of the data that's pretty standard in every area plan. It's just, it's updated data about demographics and things about that particular community's area plan boundaries. So we'd like to develop a checklist and distribute it out to the town halls and town councils, because that's where we get a large concentration of people who are already really focused on the community and thinking about its vision. And so that body would start working on the general data so that in the remaining time of the 24, 25, you can see the yellow, it's a little before the yellow. At the top is Lower Lake Area Plan, then Cobb, Kelseyville, Lakeport, Shoreline Communities, Upper Lake Nice, Riviera's, and Middletown. We've ranked those according to date of their adoption. So we're going to start with the oldest and go to the newest. And after, after we are able to get the standard checklist finished locally, that's when we're going to start the vision planning accord, and we'll go in that timeline. So starting at the oldest and going to the newest, we'll be able to collect all that demographic or the standard checklist stuff from the town halls, and we're going to start a greater public outreach to the community to start working on the visioning phase of the community area plans.
Quick question. How does the county collaborate with districts like District Four that have city governing bodies, like City of Lakeport and City of Clear? Like, do you guys work with them, or are we completely separate as far as gathering information?
Well, the climate vulnerability analysis is going to be a regional one. That will include data from the cities, because you know, it's not like the environment stops when you drive into Lakeport. And so, so that's another thing that I like about this, is that the cities will be able to use this as a tool as well for their planning. For the area plans, specifically the Lakeport area plan, it's only the North Lakeport area.
Okay.
So we will, of course, be welcoming input from the city, but it doesn't necessarily guide the visioning of that community, though you can't really separate yourself, you know, from the city. So we do expect input and interaction, but it is a county jurisdictional document.
Okay, thank you.
My pleasure. And then we'll get to, you know, whatever's left over, which is pretty much most of the rest of the general plan. And additionally, we have two elements that are specific to Lake County that aren't standard in every general plan, which the state allows you to do. They have a certain number of area plans, or area plan elements, no, sorry, general plan elements that are required, either in their own element or interwoven and addressed throughout, you know, kind of an interwoven type of general plan. But they also allow you to create your own elements for areas that are of local priority. And so in Lake County, we have two. We have the agricultural element and the aggregate resource management plan, which is the extraction of resources from our creeks and our quarries. Those will also need updating as well. And so those are listed separately. What we didn't list also is the ongoing SEQA. So the SEQA start, we have it listed for the, I'm pointing like you can see on the screen. We have it listed for the safety element and the housing element, but it's important to know that it's actually going to be continuing and ongoing and interwoven, because all land planning documents are going to have to be addressed with their environmental impacts. And I think that's all I've got for you.
Could we all get a copy of that, sir?
Certainly, yeah. I'd be happy to email that to you.
Yes, please.
I plan to broadcast it far and wide. I haven't actually told the board yet, but I'll get to that.
It's coming.
Yes.
I have a question. Maybe this is premature, but I'm, I was just thinking about Kelseyville, and it doesn't seem to have a, a community group like that. It has a business association and it has ag groups. For resident, we're interested in participating in this process. What would you recommend he or she do?
Well, that's a good question. For, for communities that don't have a formal town hall, I don't see why we couldn't start with KBA. That's a pretty good organization of people who might be interested. Yeah.
I would not recommend that.
Okay. It's important to note that this stage is a checklist of, it's a collection of standard data. It's not objective. It's going to be pulled from census data, from county records and things like that. When we go to the visioning stage, it will also be clearly conveyed to the town halls and groups who worked on the checklist that we're going much broader, because sometimes when you have the, the people who are serving in the town hall, that, it may not represent other aspects of the public. And so what I'm hoping will be included in this RFP is we've tried to really emphasize public outreach as we go forward. I would like to see, instead of just, you know, a public meeting here and a public meeting there, I'd like to see a set of tables at events like Lower Lake, that, that Lower Lake Day where we close the street, the important things where all the community is gathering, so that we can generate more interest. And, and I'm using kind of just my direct experience, having gone through the general plan update in Yukaya. We went to the pumpkin fest, but we went armed with surveys. And so when someone, some unsuspecting visitor would get their lunch and go sit down at this covered picnic area, I'd just wander over and give them a survey. And so we ended up getting like 200 surveys that day that we would probably not have gotten had we been limited to an evening public meeting here, over there, or even a website. So we're, we're going to work on a multifaceted public outreach to just gain as much input as we possibly can.
Is that something us as commissioners can be involved in?
Oh, sure. I'm happy to...
I think that's...
Put us to work.
Add workers, yes.
I'm very glad to hear that. Thank you. I think that kind of public outreach is really important. My only problem with using an organization like KBA is, you know, that's a paid membership organization with a very narrow scope. So to hear that you're reaching out at public events is just marvelous.
Indeed. That would be the community visioning phase. But I'm welcome, I'm, I'm happy to use any member of the public that wants to go call the assessor's office and find the latest information, too. Yeah, so all that, all the, the one that, that is objective.
The other comment I had about this was, the agriculture element, is that going to include cannabis? You, I've noticed that you kind of use the word agriculture in reference to cannabis projects.
The county and the state both consider agriculture, or cannabis as an agricultural product, so it does make sense that it would be included here.
Okay, so in that case, I would think that three years is an awfully long time to wait, because I, I think we're kind of in a crisis right now, because we, we're making decisions on projects without good guidance from any kind of general plan. That's just my feeling about it.
I will keep that in mind. To, to a large extent, this timeline that you see before you has been figured out due to staff resources. And hopefully, my hope is that by throwing it all into one big old enchilada, we're going to get the attention of larger companies that we might not get if we divvy it up into small pieces. And so that's my big hope. But I'm going to have to see who we get to work with. Though I do have a lot of staff that are really good at learning things very quickly, and they have a lot of talent, and we're going to be relying on them throughout this five-year period, because they're the local experts. And that's one of the issues that I've seen in the past, is you may get this total rock star planning company, but they're like, you know, in, I don't know, Sacramento or Reading or something. And so they need to rely on local, on local information and local staff. And I can tell you that our, our planning staff all love Lake County, and they know an awful lot about what's special here. And so we're going to rely on them a lot.
I think that's really important. I've been on a couple of the committees to interview potential planners or directors, that kind of thing, and the, or rather, the consultants that would be behind that. And I was shocked by the amount of cutting and pasting I saw in those, and which largely reflected a lack of true local knowledge. So I think that's an important change you're talking about.
Absolutely. Thank you. Anything else? I could talk about this all day.
Well, I just want to tell you that I've seen that you're doing a lot of team building, and I'm just thrilled. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you. We've got a great team.
I do think that this cannabis, I, I'm really, really uncomfortable with the, the guidelines that we have right now. And once we give a, a project the go-ahead, the permit, they have an entitlement, and this is going to affect our land use forever. So I think it's really important.
I will take that with me when I go and discuss it to the board, because I serve at the pleasure of the board, and if they want to turn this all around, except for the red stuff that's due this year, then yeah, I'm open to that negotiation. It's just a matter of, you know, where do we start focusing first? So I appreciate you voicing the priority. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, seeing as, looks like we're done, so I'll call the...
Did we take action on the bylaws today?
You amended them, and then you took action.
Okay. All I had was a banana this morning.
All right, meeting adjourned at 10:03.
Thank you.